Welcome, pod, South Cole Podcast number eighteen. And our prestigious guest, I figured, I've been wanting to have him on for a long time. I really have. But we've had a lot of other weird stuff going on, like a city election.
And a royal wedding.
Many, yeah, royal wedding.
I don't want to miss that.
Minnehaha County Commissioner Jeff Barth, welcome to the show.
It's an honor to be here and honestly, you could have had me anytime.
And, and of course, co-host, his name we will not speak.
I was not granted any kind of new titles or names at this royal wedding. I'm very upset.
I have a couple of titles for you. And Robert Mayling, our great producer over here.
Hey, hey, hey.
And Jeff, of course, this, you're in your what term?
This is the end of my third term.
End of your third, and you're running again?
Yep, this is my twelfth year as a county commissioner.
And how many people are running? You elect three, right?
Yep, three of us are up.
In the general?
And all three of us are going for reelection and there are three other candidates.
And who are the other three candidates?
There are two Democrats, Nikki Gronley and John Cunningham.
Uh huh, and I know John.
There's a third Republican who I've met, I don't remember his name. It starts with an O. And he's just graduating this month, I believe, from law school down at USD East twenty-three.
So I've got a question. So county commissioners are not term limited?
No, we're not.
So you're going into your
Fourth.
Fourth term?
Yeah.
If you're reelected?
And they're what? Are they four of your terms or they're four?
So does this, does this make you currently the longest?
No, not by far.
A seated, well, currently elected, the longest-term Democrat in the entire state?
I don't think so, but
Pam Nelson's got him beat, I think.
Well, she
Pam's got you beat on that, yeah.
But there are Democrats in other counties as well. And
Name one. I'm kidding.
We don't have that much time, come on. Where are they?
It's like my girlfriend that's in Canada.
I totally have a girlfriend that lives in Canada.
Sure you do.
You don't know, you don't know that county commissioner. He commissions in another county.
Yeah.
Well, I am the senior commissioner here in Sioux Falls and I've been the only Democrat on the board for all these
Yes, you have, yes, you have.
And before that, we went four years with no Democrats and and before that, again, there was one, Mike O'Connor. Ann Hyack replaced him and then I replaced Jim Sweep.
Now, you said there's two other Democrats running in the primary.
No, no, there's no primary.
So there is no, so all of you get to be in the general?
All six of us are in the general and
Oh, wow.
This isn't, we don't elect by districts or in the county.
Many counties do. And we, we have three one-cycle though, and two the other cycle. There are five total commissioners.
I have to ask you a question. What if John gets elected and you don't? Would that bother you?
Um, no.
You know John. I know John. I like him. We should get him on the show.
Right.
Uh huh.
I, I, I'm not worried about it. You know, you play the game and you have to be ready to lose and certainly I hope the citizens make the right decision, both for me and for them.
Mm-hmm.
If it's right for me to be done, I'm ready to be done.
Yes. Um, just quickly, you know, obviously there's some big things going on in the county. We have, we're building a new jail. Um, the recently, the sheriff might have to tear a house down. That's not, that's not a joke. That might have to happen.
Sad, isn't it?
Yeah, it's very sad. Any other big things going on in the county?
Well, we're working on, and it's
The triage?
The triage, that's what I was going to bring up. And we're going to have a meeting on that next Wednesday at a breakfast meeting with the city and school board over at Hy-Vee and some folks will be presenting the issues and stuff with the triage system. And it's exciting. I'm
It is a good idea.
For our listeners who don't know, could explain the triage system to them?
Well, the triage system
He's a Catholic, so he's probably thinking about something else right now.
It's to divert people from incarceration, at least incarceration in jail. Uh, you know, if a person belongs in, uh, to dry out, we'll dry them out. If a person belongs in treatment, we'll do treatment. If they belong in a mental facility, we'll do a mental facility. If they should go home, we'll send them home. Uh, the point being that we don't have to put everybody in jail.
Not going to book everybody necessarily, yeah.
And so there'll be an assessment made as you come into the system and someone working, I think they have something called a RAY Risk Assessment Instrument. And then they have these options. And they're not fully fledged yet. Uh, there's, there are things that need to be expanded on, like the uh, mental facilities. The state has been a total, uh, totally an unreliable partner as far as caring for people with mental and chemical issues. Uh, you know, you send people down to Yankton and they bounce right back. Um, I got in trouble one time for complaining that they were dropping people off on the street after we sent them to Yankton and they said, oh, no, no, we, we put them at the Union Gospel. Actually, five went to the Union Gospel, five went to jail, five went to nursing home. Uh, but the Union Gospel, that's jail. I mean, that's on the street. We're putting people on the street.
So, so what you're saying is, like, let's say now, if someone is, is too intoxicated or, or they did something and they did commit a crime, they just throw them in jail and they have to sit there until they figure out what they want to do with them. What you're saying is you could still book them, but as long as maybe there's someone who could come and get them and
That could be. I, you know, we do actually
They're going to have a court date and all that other stuff. That's just, you're not going to throw them in jail.
We used to have a detox where if you were drunk, that's where you went. And before they could let you go, uh, you had to have a half an hour of counseling.
And you have to stay in there for twenty-four hours because it happened to one of my friends?
But not to you, right?
No, no, but it's a very sore subject with him. He was, he was a hundred feet from the front door of his house and the cops said, uh, you're intoxicated and they make you stay there twenty-four hours.
They don't anymore.
Yeah, it's changed.
In the sobering center, they, uh, they just wait until you're sober and then you're released. The, the detox they have now is for people that may want to go for alcohol or treatment, whatever. And, uh, you know, that's again, something that um, a lot of people are not supportive of that in the sense they don't believe that you're addicted. They don't believe that you can be addicted to methamphetamines or
Oh, I'm highly addictive.
Yeah.
Very highly addictive.
Yeah, well, that's, uh, you know, some people just don't believe in that. It's a decision that you made to start smoking cigarettes and now twenty years later, uh, after they've taken one of your lungs out, you're still smoking.
Oh, I know some people like that.
I do too.
We don't need them seeing anything. I, I have a question for you. Obviously, you, you endorsed Jolene Letcher for mayor.
I did.
So, um, do you think that the, that, you know, we've talked about this for a long time, that Lincoln County and Minnehaha County and the city need to do more things together? Do you have, with this new administration and new city council, do you have more positive outlook that you guys are going to do more things together or do you have a more negative outlook or do you have maybe like things are just going to be the same?
I have hope. And she's pretty cute. No. The, the fact is that with the new mayor and I, uh, I met him after the election for the first time and told him I didn't vote for him, but I was hopeful that we could accomplish some things. And I think it already seems like he's, uh, pulling in some other resources. I know that he met with Cindy Heiburger, our, our chairperson and and one of our staff people who's been working on this triage system.
Right.
So they met with
I think Paul's very supportive of it.
Yeah.
He's mentioned it during
It's, it's right up, uh, his alley as far as reducing crime.
Right.
And we need, uh, we need his input. We need his, uh, you know, leadership to move it forward.
Less, less press conferences, more leadership.
You know, honestly, uh, we, we had ideas like this, uh, with the previous mayor, but they weren't his idea, so he didn't really care.
Yeah, um, it's, it's like, I said to someone, I go, if you, if you want to look at one of the things that he totally, well, crime was one of the things he ignored, but, um, public transit, he totally ignored it. He felt the only way to solve the problem was to either just get rid of it or charge way a lot more than what people can afford. And he, he did nothing to solve the public transit problem. And it's not an easy problem to solve.
No.
But it has to be solved.
Is the public transit problem the issue that no one is riding the buses? Because I never really see anybody on that.
You know, I, I agree with you, whoever you are.
Uh, well, the, the, my opinion on that is that we're not, we're not running them correctly.
Well, I just was reading a, a bit that in some cities out east, there's another transportation provider similar to Lyft or Uber that does buses. And I think that pair transit could be handled by an organization like that just as easily without ginormous vehicles.
Uh, there's, there's a lot of, um, private companies that would love to be a part of that.
Yeah.
And, and we could, we could kind of, I wouldn't say wash our hands of it, but kind of. I've also been of the opinion that the hospitals, you know, instead of building basketball arenas and, and, and holding on to liquor licenses and and having sports bars, maybe they should be transporting a lot of these patients.
Well, that's going to be a huge issue this year.
Themselves and putting that as a part of their medical care. And so if they're on Medicare or Medicaid or, or have an insurance plan that gets put into there, it wouldn't cost them that much extra to do that. And, you know, it would, I, I believe, I'm the same way with transports. I believe they should do their own transports too, but that's a whole other, other thing, but, but that was, that would save the city and the taxpayers a lot of money if, if we had pair transit go more private.
Yeah.
And, and I think it would save them money and be a lot better. But I also think that the way our bus service is going, we're building this, you know, one point people bring up all the time is Melanie Bliss brings this up a lot, you know, we build, we build this affordable housing outside of the bus area. How are these people supposed to get to work?
Well
You know, and then the other, the other problem too
Was it this, this spoken hub system of busing is kind of odd. Why not?
You should do grid.
Do grid, yeah, make it
And then the, and the other thing
Like I, I, one time I looked at the, the bus robs and the bus schedule to take, I was curious, want to take the bus to work one day. Ninety minutes
Yeah.
For me to do the bus when I could drive ten.
Well, honestly, it's, it's not my issue. As long as the sip and pedal thing is going, I'm okay.
Yeah. You had it, you, we talked about this, not about that, but we talked about, um, an idea you had, and I really liked it, where to reduce maybe some of the arrests that the Sioux Falls Police Department is doing. In other words, trying to handle some of these things, the triage center's going to help a lot. But to handle some more of these things where they can kind of solve these problems out in the field instead of arresting people. You had suggested the county should charge the city for every time that they
Well, I would love that to happen. Uh, it's certainly a huge cost to us and you know, we're building a forty-eight million dollar jail expansion based on
I don't have a problem with it. I think it's a great, I think the city spends money, spends the money on way more foolish things. It would get the police to maybe try to solve some of these stuff out in the field more and, and, and not arresting people just because they're bothering people downtown before First Friday, you know?
Well, I know that, um, you know, they arrest people right there at the Bishop Dudley House for being intoxicated and I thought that was going to be a, a place where people who had had a few could go and sleep it off calmly without
But they won't let them.
No, and I, I don't understand that because I thought that was going to be, uh, part of our, uh, the plan.
So then they want well-behaved homeless people?
Well, we all want that, but the, you know, the, the homeless issue, uh, Mayor Munson started the Homeless Advisory Board and like when we decided to build the safe home, uh, he left us at the altar and we had to build it ourselves without
I remember that.
Help from the city and it's
I, I gave several counselors hell for not voting for it.
It's a, it's a successful program there.
Saves us money.
It does and it's, uh, some of those folk are just, uh, taken back to uh, a safe home rather than taken to jail.
Right.
You know?
And they're not being scraped off this, off the sidewalks.
Well, we had one that, uh, didn't make it this year.
Right, I know.
And I, I never did hear exactly, but, um, it froze to death, he froze to death and, uh, he may have slipped and hit his head. I, I believe he had not been, uh, uh, drinking personally.
Those are the stories, is he just going down to the banquet for food?
Something like that. And it's a, it's on a hill there and it's rough out there, uh, on some of these sidewalks.
Wow, it's a sad deal.
I, I knew a nurse who the same thing happened to, actually. She was really a wonderful person, uh, at my parents' nursing home and, uh, she retired to take care of her husband, took her dog out for a walk, slipped on the steps and froze to death on her own front steps. But that's life in South Dakota. It's, it can be a hazardous place. But going back to, uh, you know, we do need to solve more problems without arresting people and we need to do more about, um, uh, problems with mental illnesses. Those of you that, uh, speak during public input.
Don't even, Jeff.
I don't even mean you.
Don't even get started.
I, uh
I, I Yeah, it's like, it's like they want to do some set of rules. And it's like, when somebody's mentally ill, and I'm being serious here.
Yeah.
When somebody's mentally ill, no set of rules is going to, is going to fix someone who's mentally ill. You can't fix someone who's mentally ill with a set of rules. It's not really how it works.
No, proper treatment is how it works.
Right. And then the other thing is, is that they're doing a presentation tomorrow at the informational about eleven seventy-two that goes into effect July first, which actually is going to open up more public input. They're going to have to allow, the city is now going to have to allow public input at all public meetings. They don't do that now.
Is that, uh, Jameson bringing that bill?
I don't know who brought it. I haven't looked at all the sponsors, but it's
Well, I, I'm not aware of that very much and let me say
Well, you guys allow it at the county.
Yeah, but you know, we have, uh, what are official meetings where we don't even talk, we don't even have an official agenda. For example, just recently, we went on a economic development bus tour of a couple of businesses in the county. This is the second year in a row we did it and we, we visited Rosenbauer and Lyons that builds, uh, fire trucks. We went to, uh, Minnehaha County, uh, Community Water, which, uh, you know, has water for businesses, residents. We went and visited the, uh, LG Everest quarries up at Dell Rapids. And we went and visited the Hafte Brothers Seed Company. And it was an open meeting, but we didn't have you know, testimony and, and agenda.
Yeah.
We just went to those places and we did have, um, you know, Nikki Gronley, who's a candidate for
She came along.
She came along and asked questions and, uh, uh, you know, I think she even got lunch on the deal. You know, at the same time, uh, there's really no opportunity. No one's making speeches. I guess our planning director pointed out a place where we'd bought, uh, easement along the highway for, for moving the highway a couple of feet. Uh, we found a, uh, there's a church that was built a hundred years ago or so that's, uh, encroached on the county highway right away. And, uh, so we bought land on the other side of the road and moved it over.
Is there room out there for a big yellow house?
Yes, there is. Uh, but you know, we have a height limit of thirty-five feet also.
I'm, I, I'm actually thinking that the school district should put a bid in on the house and then that could be their new elementary school.
If they dug
The Cannon Park Elementary.
If they dug a twenty-foot hole underneath it, wouldn't that solve the problem?
Yeah, wouldn't it? Yeah.
Get a good sump pump then.
So, so let's talk a little bit about that. You mentioned this to me the other day. So if the, according to the judge's ruling, if they don't move the house or demolish it within thirty days,
The sheriff
The sheriff has to, has to take care of it. So how does that work?
Well, I, I haven't talked to the sheriff about it, although he seems to have a twinkle in his eye occasionally on this kind of thing. But I think, you know
Is he just waiting to use some of that equipment that we're borrowing national security dollars?
Get off the tank.
They have one.
I know, the Bearcat.
Yeah, I, I think that
Go down to Nyberg's and get a chain too while you're at it.
You know, the fact is that a lot of the contractors that do this kind of work are fairly wrapped up with
Oh, yeah, summer's there, is their busy time. I just envisioned boards on the plywood over the thing for six months before anybody does anything to it, but
Well, I think that, you know, potentially there is some resource, are some resources in the building that could be recovered, the doors, the cabin crews, the windows.
You do a salvage auction.
And then
But you need more than thirty days to do that.
Yeah.
If someone's going to go in there and do salvaging
Wouldn't the owners just start taking all that stuff out anyway and just
They should.
Just leave the walls?
Yeah.
Well, there's some questions, we won't go too deep, but there's some questions about who really owns the house.
Well, that sounds like a mess.
So basically, if you, if you belong to, let's say, the bank that has the loan out on the house, you might be part owner. So, and that I'm sure will come out.
It is, yeah, this
That's all rumors right now, but I'm sure all that will come out.
It is a complicated situation. That was super easily avoidable.
Well, if you wouldn't have been, you know, if you wouldn't have changed the plans that, you know
The building inspector should have not signed off, not, 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 but, but, but when it really comes down
Well, you mean like when they're told eight times in one week that a retaining wall is going to fall over? And then the retaining wall falls over?
But if, if, if the building inspector didn't, couldn't sign off on approval until the fire inspector showed up.
Yeah.
This, I bet you we wouldn't have been in court because they would have said, move the wall, because it's too close to the fireplace.
But the fachwa.
And I, that's, that argument also didn't help them in court either, I don't think.
Well, I, I'm proud of my, uh, former colleague, John Pecus.
Judge Pecus is the one that ruled on this, the former county commissioner.
He, uh, he was the last one that was on the board when I got elected.
And I'm sure that made him happy that the, that the Supreme Court agreed with him. They disagreed about the city suing part of it.
And again, it's not a county issue, but, uh, I like John.
It might become a county issue here real quick.
Yeah, I suppose. Yeah.
So where does the money come from then? If he has to go in, would it be a thing where the, the bank would take control of the house and then
Maybe, uh, I know there would be an assessment on the property. And so if it costs two hundred thousand dollars to take it out, that would be on that, on the land.
So the bank would have to pay the county for that.
Or else we'd auction it off and get what we could. You know, we auction off, uh, properties regularly.
Give me a sledgehammer in twenty-four hours. I can get, I could get, I could get
A good chunk of it done.
I could get a lot of it out of there. In a trailer.
We wind up owning some odd pieces of land, uh, you know, eight feet wide and four hundred feet long.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm serious.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Uh, like where they can't agree on whose fence it is.
Right.
And so they make it into a separate plant and then nobody pays the taxes.
So what happens, I mean, at the thirty days if the people refuse to, to leave?
We'll have to find out. I'm, uh, I'm in as much awe as anyone else.
Well, they get booted out.
Well, but that, but does, does the court order allow for the county to go in then and take, take, take possession and auction the stuff off to recoup costs?
Well, I don't know about that. I think we just get to bulldoze it. I'm not sure.
Um, my, I had some friends that bought a house, uh, on North Minnesota, back there on a bank auction.
Uh huh.
And it took them two days to clean the house before they could even move in.
Sure.
Because the people who got booted out literally only had enough time to take, you know, their clothing and the possessions they wanted. So the house was a mess.
Well, they probably knew for four months or so that they were being kicked out.
Right.
I toured foreclosures at the Twin Cities right about the time of the peak of the housing crisis when there were like the most of them and, I mean, it was always like sad or like you had people that like took, like the vents and took their water heater or like major appliances just out of the house.
The plate covers on the electrical outlet.
What's the, uh, what's the price of copper these days?
Right.
Yeah, basically.
Yeah.
No, it is worth quite a bit because I know some people that do that.
Three bucks a ton, maybe. Yeah.
Yep, but anyway, um, any other topics before we let you go?
Ambulance.
We have an important ambulance.
Is going to be a huge issue in the county this year.
Um, I heard a rumor and I can't go deeply into this because, um,
Let's hear it.
It's very positive. There seems to be with the new council a serious exploration of doing public, public ambulance with the city.
I'm all for it.
I am too.
You know, we have another issue though, where we have three voluntary ambulances and two for-profit ambulances in the county. Along with Paramedics Plus, we've got MedStar. Uh, and then we have Humboldt, Dell Rapids, Garretson, and Jasper, Minnesota covers sixteen square miles in the northeast corner. Um, but MedStar has gone to the city of Brandon and asked them for a subsidy. And I understand that they're planning on coming to see us and ask for a subsidy. It's kind of difficult for me to see where I would want to subsidize a for-profit business.
Yeah, why not just go public?
Um, the other part of that is that even the volunteers make a nickel on it, but I, and I mean a nickel. It's like if you're hanging out at the ambulance shop, uh, you might be getting six bucks an hour sleeping overnight and all this. And then when the alarm goes off, you're getting fourteen dollars an hour. But they're not, you know, taking in, uh, you know, Trump Tower kind of money. And, uh, you know, it's hard to see what's going on with Paramedics Plus. I mean, they, you know, they're hopefully, uh, you know, bringing millions for their corporate masters, but, uh, yeah, I, I would like the idea to, I think we all need the whole county, including Lincoln County and the city of Sioux Falls and all the larger communities to get together and examine where we want to go. Are we
I know the fire department management, or at least I've been told, wants it. So they're not going to fight it, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. And, you know, they're already going to all be ALS trained, which means advanced life support. So we're going to have trained ALS firefighters that already show up before the ambulance service. So why not put an ambulance at every fire department? Which is going to be an initial investment of probably thirty to fifty million dollars. I mean, it just is.
Put five ambulances.
But it pays for itself because you, what you hide, what you do is you hire a third-party contractor to handle the billing for you. And then they take a commission and then they give you the money that they collect from insurance and because a lot of times there's going to be situations where they're not going to get paid.
That's, you know, half of them do not get paid.
Yeah.
And, uh, I have issues there too. I think, uh, I would like to be able to assess people who don't pay for their ambulance run. So we put it on, just like through the street, we put it on your house.
It's a lot easier to do that when it's a public ambulance.
And if you don't own a house, then we put a lien on you like we do. People think that you get a, a court-appointed attorney for free. You don't.
No.
We, 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 you don't have to pay for it, but you're going to pay for it someday.
Right, right.
And unless you never have, uh, a hill of beans.
I, I, I have a close relative who avoided, um, paying their, their taxes on their business for several years. And now he gets to see his tiny little social security check
Garnished?
Garnished.
Nice.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think that, uh,
They get it from you eventually.
The ambulance, the ambulance guy is telling me that they only get paid for half of them. And then they also have the frequent flyers, right? Lonely little old ladies that want you to come over and see if their kidney stones are acting up. Uh, or fellows that want to have it, like their catheter replaced.
No, I don't think it goes through that hole.
It's a painful It's a painful conversation.
If they had put a catheter in that way, that would be painful.
Okay, well, just to point out, I I was gesticulating towards my mouth with one finger.
It's great radio.
But honestly, uh, they they do get those calls from people, you know, you're eighty-two years old.
Oh, yes, they do. All the time. All the time. Yeah.
You know, it's not. And then if they're not getting paid, you know, here's another thing. An ambulance ride from Del Rapids to Sioux Falls gets paid a third as much as an ambulance ride from Beersford to Sioux Falls.
Why?
Federal government. That's Medicare and Medicaid. Uh, federal government says Minnehaw County is an urban county.
Beersford Falls outside of Minnehaw.
As a rural county. I mean, I don't know where you pass more cows coming down from up there or from down there, but either way, it's pretty.
Depends if you're driving by rural fork or not.
On that.
Did you have anything else to share with us, Jeff, before we?
No, I.
Let you go on to your next important high-powered meeting.
Before you are.
I gotta know, I gotta know what high-powered meeting are you going to that the dress code is a very nice blazer and a Foo Fighters t-shirt?
Yeah.
I can wear this anywhere. If I'd gone to the wedding, I might have been, you know.
Yeah.
Just like this.
Well, I don't know. You might have had to put on a morning coat.
You know, everyone may think that that Paul Ten Haken may have invented the no-tie look, but Jeff is the original. Paul's Paul's taking all his fashion.
Is the OG of t-shirts and jeans and blazers?
Well, it's also.
Where's your Chucks?
It's also chilly out there, so you know, it's good to have.
I think I I gotta re-watch the video, but I think Paul wore Chucks at his first council meeting. I kid you not.
Probably.
I think the real faux pas here with the tire is that you're not supposed to wear a short-sleeve shirt under a blazer. And you're supposed to have like a half inch of shirt sticking out.
Now you've got me thinking. It's like like bracelets, guys, like just the shirt cuff.
Kind of like socks in a raincoat, right? Or cuffs.
Yeah, no, it's make the shirt cuff. We can wear a tank top under there if you want or no sleeves.
I did enjoy the wedding. I turned the TV on at three in the morning.
Yeah, what time did it start?
Around then. And then then I fell asleep and my wife stayed up all night watching it. She says, why are you turning the TV on? I said, the wedding. Then I fell asleep and she stayed up all night and was shot, hungover. And I told my neighbor that we were still a little hungover from the wedding and he said, oh, where was it? I said, London. He says, oh, and I said, no, it we didn't go to London.
You just watched it on TV.
Was it Windsor Castle outside of London?
It is. It's a driving distance.
Yeah.
Like twenty miles, twenty-five miles.
I've been there.
Yeah, you have been over there. That's right.
Stonehenge.
Yeah.
So is there other stuff you'd like to?
I don't know. Is there anything you you yeah, is there anybody in the county that you'd like to knock their head up against the wall sometimes?
Well, I'm headed to a planning and zoning meeting and, you know, we in planning and zoning, we get people that have researched on the internet.
Oh, yeah, those people.
Whatever, you know.
Yeah, ask our co-host about, um, people who do research on the internet about.
Planning and zoning. You know, we.
There's everything is on the internet.
Yes.
Everything is on the internet.
A defense for anything on the internet if you look hard enough.
You don't even have to look hard, I don't think.
No, no.
But every now and then, you know, you can take your tinfoil cap off and and hear other people.
So long as it's not a winter by nearby.
Now, you were telling me that they've been recording the planning meetings, right?
Yes.
I can't find them anywhere.
I think you have to go under planning, planning and zoning. I will send you a link when I find one myself.
That'll be cool. I like to watch them.
Yeah.
Like I don't watch enough of the public meetings. I needed to add another one to the.
Well, that's what happens when you don't subscribe to cable.
Yeah, I know.
You're stuck with public television.
What we really need actually is more citizens to come to the meetings. Um, we, uh, some of the candidates have been coming. Nikki and John have been coming and that's great.
I have actually said that I believe that people in Sioux Falls are more involved with their local government than anywhere else in South Dakota.
It's because of you, Scotty.
I, well.
It's because, uh, it's because.
I think it's because of David and his PowerPoint presentations. And I think, you know, and Sierra and her.
What do you mean? The PowerPoint presentations?
And let's look at this beautiful picture.
Because I think I think every I think every PowerPoint should end with beauty. So here is a flower.
Here's a picture I took the other day.
Look at that sunset.
Of a Diet Coke can. Did they just finish drinking?
I like it. I, uh.
Next week, I think I'm just gonna make a PowerPoint where it's just the sound of trickling water for five minutes.
My very first city council meeting in Sioux Falls, I I had no idea what to expect and the guy just got up there and gave a speech about how Project Trim was basically apartheid. Literally like talking about the history of apartheid and how it relates to Project Trim.
He's pretty close.
I, uh, that was quite the culture shock from moving from Woodbury, Minnesota to have that in a city council meeting.
You mean Woodbury?
Woodbury.
Woodbury. Woodbury.
Woodbury.
Well, I tell you what. When I first came to town, I was a union guy, right?
Yeah.
And there was a couple of retired guys from the unions that went to all the school board meetings, all the city council meetings, all the county commission meetings and reported back to us. And nobody does that anymore.
Well, doesn't it speak volumes of the good work you guys are doing if the citizens don't really need to come in and watch you?
Uh, you know, that that could be, but, uh, uh, there's a lot of stuff happens that we need, uh, that we need the public to be part of so that they can explain it to the other numbskulls in the in the public.
Well, and it's better to have the public input before something's enacted.
Jeff, you're in the presence of other union telephone employees too.
I am.
You are. You you.
Me.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are you which union?
The Communication Workers of America.
Wow.
Local, three numbers.
Seventy-five hundred?
Maybe, I don't know.
Okay, well, that was my old local here. Yeah, I was a vice president of the union until I went to management.
Scab.
Uh, dark side. I was getting too, uh, too chunky to climb telephone poles, I think.
Ah, I just answered the phone.
Wow.
I was always too chunky to climb telephone poles.
Call one-eight-hundred-Waldermart.
See, you and Jeff have something in common.
Yeah, we do.
You know, Kermit Snager's wife June was a CWA member.
I've heard that.
Yeah. Which, and I need to go soon, but let me tell you the story about Kermit.
Oh, boy. One I've never heard.
When he was a state senator, he had a bill to reduce the uh, tax on a used car if it cost, right now, if you buy a car for a thousand dollars, there's no sales tax on it. He wanted to raise it to two thousand dollars and index it to inflation. And because he tried to get a car for his wife and he couldn't find one that for less than two thousand. So anyway, my my state senator, Barb Everest, from the Everest family, right? She said, um, and she married into the family. She said, I grew up in a poor family and we should not deprive poor people with for the opportunity of paying taxes.
Sounds like something Barb would say.
That that was a, I like Barb, but that was a great argument, wasn't it?
I don't think that anybody would complain if they're deprived of their right to pay taxes. I think that would be very much welcome.
I believe she said that. I've met.
She did say that.
I know she, I believe it. I totally believe it. I met her.
Kermit was flabbergasted.
When she used to be in the legislature and I was in a meeting with her. And I I looked over at somebody and this is when I wasn't really involved with a lot of politics. And I just remember listening to her talk and I just was thinking to myself, this person's in the legislature.
She was the senate leader.
I know.
Hey, so I need to go, guys.
Well, that was great having Jeff. He had to be on his way to another important meeting. They have a lot of meetings when you're a county commissioner. I don't think a lot of people know.
I don't think a lot of people know that either.
They have a lot of appointee. They have a lot of appointments, so.
Yeah.
They have way more meetings to go to than than the.
So they're both the legislative and the executive branch of the county.
And then, you know, they're on appointments and then they also have, they get invited to a lot of stuff. Do they get paid more than a city council? Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it's the best part-time gig in South Dakota.
It's about five thousand dollars more a year than a than a co- than a city council. So not a lot more, but sure, they do. They do get paid more. And they have a lot more responsibility and.
Some counties though in the country.
Yeah.
Well, you know, Stearns County, Minnesota, I still.
Did you know some counties in the state actually give health insurance to?
Commissioners?
To the commissioners, yes.
Well, it's very good of the commissioners to write that rule for themselves.
Yes, it was. Yeah, they can do that. They can do that. Yeah.
I don't think people pay enough attention to county government, what happens in county government, but.
Yeah, it's a it's a it's a weird thing because they have to deal with the townships and the city, whatever. So.
What are we, a week into?
Week into the Paul Ten.
Haken.
Administration.
That's right. And already look at the way the world is. Got an American princess.
Oh, God, yeah, things have been changing like crazy. Um, I on the way over here, on the drive over here, I was mentioning to you that I was I've been very impressed that Paul hasn't had any press conferences and that he's the city administrator, he's the the boss, he shouldn't screw around with that kind of stuff.
Right.
And so far he hasn't. And maybe just because he hasn't anything to say. But I I really believe that he's gonna be more a lot more low-key than than Heathrow. I even go to the press release page every day and there hasn't been barely any press releases except your standard ones from the different departments about, you know, somebody's reading a book at the library or whatever.
How do we know he's getting stuff done, Sioux Falls?
Damn it. Damn it. How do we know? Like the other day, the AOC thing blew up and I thought that the fire uh, chief and and Mr. Fessler, who is the fire captain, something or other, did a fine job. They they had their own press conference. The mayor was not there. He didn't need to be there. It's their job, their responsibility. They came out. They said this is what happened. We were lucky, blah, blah, blah. And some may say, well, where was the mayor? Well, the mayor didn't need to be there. These people worked for him. I'm sure they briefed him and said this is the situation and Paul was like, good, because I got other stuff to do. So.
And if doing a press conference is what he wants to not do with the days that God gave him, then so be it.
Yeah. But, uh, yeah, so we're just kind of waiting to see who's gonna be on his team. Um, I was told by, uh, one of the other, um, mayoral candidates who talks to Paul quite a bit, that he believes, and you know, I kind of agree with him. I didn't at first, but he kind of convinced me that he he thinks if Paul's gonna make changes, he needs to do them right away. Um, with department heads and stuff like that and just do a clean sweep right away and not drag it out. So we'll see what he does there. Um, he named his his deputy chief of staff or who would say are his communications manager, which was his campaign manager, TJ Nelson, and then he, um, it is rumored that Erica Beck will become his chief of staff, which actually surprises me because I would think she'd be more of a fit for community development, but you never know how those things work.
Well, and it could be, I mean, if you read T-Lies and I and I don't know her, um, that if, because she she's got some history with the city.
Right, she quit.
Well, but I mean, what was her role with the city?
She was she was basically urban planner.
Yeah, so if that and that could be sort of the avenue that Mayor Ten Haken is wanting to take is more of a, uh, urban planning and sort of a planning sort of capacity in his first term here.
Oh, yeah, Lloyd, uh, former Lloyd executive, yeah.
Well, I mean, well, you can you can you can look at it and say, okay, you know, maybe he's got a vision that wasn't in his twenty-twenty-six plan, but.
Twenty-twenty-six.
But it could be in his twenty-twenty-seven plan.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't have no idea who he's tapping for attorney.
Yeah.
And I have no idea who he's tapping for finance director. I have I've heard nothing. Um, so he's keeping those cards pretty close because he's gotta have somebody in mind by now.
I would think with the size, with the size and just sort of the the scope of his transition team, that they would have a couple of names that would have.
Especially a city attorney.
Would have floated to the top by now. Well, both really. I mean, we're, you know, a city that's not short on attorneys. And we're a city that's not short on finance people either.
And I know that I've been told by a lot of people that, and I don't know this for a fact, I've just been told this, that he likes to put women in leadership roles. So you're gonna probably see a lot more women in in his team than you did in Heathrow's team.
Could be.
Is is fine.
Of course, it's fine.
But so far, I guess, but so far I have, I should say I haven't been impressed, but I haven't been unimpressed by anything.
Yes.
The only thing, it's too soon and the only thing too is that, but I I did like the fact that he wasn't jumping up and down at a podium about this AOC fire and we stopped a major disaster. I mean, I could, I I could just picture the the former, you know, mayor, just we diverted an ad disaster and our fire department and, you know, and it's like, yeah, we've heard of the disaster. Okay, let's move on.
We have heard disaster.
And actually, they said the drone.
Was the big help.
Was the big help because they could tell where they needed to squirt the water to keep it away from the fire away from the building.
Because if it made the if the fire made into the building.
We're gonna have a bad time. It would have been a bomb.
Quote to quote Samuel L. Jackson in Jurassic Park, hold on to your butts.
Let's put it this way, there would have been a plant sale at Lewis. Whatever you could scrape off the street.
But it would have been the plants from that location, going all the way to one on Sixty-Ninth and Louise.
Yeah, yeah. We've we've moved our lawn.
The window in the studio would be toast.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, it would not have been. It would not have been a good situation, so.
So good on the fire department. Good work, guys.
Good job. Good job. Good job.
Good job.
It was a private contractor that ran the drone too, which is kind of funny. But anyway, um, I don't really have anything else. Do you? Did you have anything to add? Enjoyed Mr. Pischke's Neil Tapio interview.
Yeah. I gotta go back and listen to that.
It's it's I learned a lot about Neil that I didn't know. It doesn't make me want to support him. I there was a lot of stuff in there that I didn't realize.
Yeah, I was.
That he's a tool salesman.
Uh, I was really surprised, uh, how much you got out of a long format with him instead of just sound bites that people give you. And, uh, yeah, and he was just super cordial. He's the first politician I've ever had in this room who did a bit. Cause, uh, oh, what what was the thing? He was pretending he didn't know who Corey Heidelberg was.
Oh, yeah, it was funny.
He asked about that and he he did this thing where he's just like, no, I I don't know that. And I totally just bought it hook, line and sinker and was trying to explain Dakota Free Press. It's kind of like the Democrat version of Dakota War College and it's Corey Heidelberg of an Aberdeen runs it. And I'm just like going on and on. Finally, he's just like Heidelberg. Well, that just sounds like a lot of hot air. Doing a bit.
He's doing a bit. He's doing a bit. Cut it, cut it.
Apparently, he's obsessed with me. That's what Neil said. Cool.
Um.
Well.
Well, real quick, did you hear Laurel or Yanni?
What?
Okay, you didn't get it. Did you hear Laurel or Yanni?
I refuse. I refuse to listen to it. I refuse to look at articles related to it. It's just the dumbest thing and it's clearly Yanni.
Yeah, well, it's Laurel.
What are you talking about?
I'll show you in the car. The White House, though, this is funny, though. The White House came out with a video and they had all the different White House staff debating over which one it was. And in the very end, they play for Trump and he goes, I hear Kofefe.
Nice.
Have a good night.
Yep. Thanks. Bye.